Welcome to the Grand Rapids Public School Board Meeting for Monday, March 15, 2024. We welcome and appreciate your presence at this meeting. We respectfully request that you turn off cellular phones and refrain from clapping, cheering, or making audible comments. We invite you to make formal public comment during the designated times on the agenda, non-agenda items, or if you wish, excuse me, agenda items or non-agenda items or both. If you wish, if you are doing it for both sections, please fill out two cards and mark them appropriately. You can return those comments, the cards, to the entryway, and our board secretary will collect them there. Ms. Shaki, would you please call a row?
Good evening, everyone. Ms. Lewis is excused. Ms. Melton is excused. Mr. Rodriguez.
Here.
Mr. Ross.
Here.
Ms. Shaki here. Ms. Wade.
President.
Ms. Davis.
Here.
Mr. Eetman.
Somewhere talking.
Somewhere talking. All right. Almost here. All right. And President Williams.
Present.
We have quorum.
And we need approval of our agenda. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Then we have approval of our agenda. We will start off with celebrations. Dr. Roby.
Good evening. So I'd like to bring forward Mr. Eric Harmson and Mr. Dan Van Til as we are celebrating our Coit Scholars.
Can we get one more chair?
Absolutely. And then with Dr. Edie, thank you, the principal of Coit.
Art teacher, Ms. Van Til.
And art teacher, thank you. Welcome to all of you.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Roby, President Williams, other distinguished members of the board. It's my privilege to first show you that. There we go. We're here to celebrate the accomplishment of three Coit Scholars whose artwork was selected for a competitive state art exhibit. And let me give you some details about that exhibit. It's the, it's called the MAEA Juried Show. It's a professional organization for visual arts teachers in the state of Michigan, the Michigan Art Education Association, and they have an annual exhibit of elementary, middle level, and high school level artwork. Coit Scholars Naomi Eetman, who's in kindergarten, Eden Davis, who's in second grade, and Grace Farrell, who we'll get to meet very soon, who's in fifth grade, their works of art were selected out of hundreds of statewide submissions, I mean, hundreds and hundreds of statewide submissions from public and non-public schools to be included in this highly competitive exhibit. All 83 counties in the state of Michigan can participate. Counties are divided into 18 regions. GRPS happens to be in region nine, which has five counties. The top 100 works for the elementary division are selected from all state regions, grades K through five. On a national level, just to put this competition in context, on a national level, Michigan is ranked third for the most submissions to a state student art exhibit, following the states of New York and California. This makes Michigan's exhibit one of the most competitive student art exhibits in the country, which is something we're very excited about. Yeah. And I'd like to show you these works of art, if that's okay. The first one by Naomi Eetman, who's in kindergarten, with a powerful message. Here by Eden Davis, who's in second grade. And the final by Grace Farrell, who is in fifth grade. I've invited Ms. Van Dronin and Dr. Edie to the dais, if they have any words, or Executive Director Harmson, if you guys have any other words you want to add.
I just would like to say that these three students have shown up again and again. It's not the first time in front of you celebrating their art, and I'm sure it won't be their last. And I am just so proud of their hard work. They continue to go above and beyond the expectations and push themselves creatively and academically.
They show up authentically themselves. One thing I love about Coit and being their principal is that we allow them to show up their creativity every day, their voice every day, and reminding me about certain students or principal council meetings, but they really are open to be, we allow them to be who they are, and they are welcoming that. They walk in it. They live it. And so I am proud, and I just know, we, I always say this, we're going to continue to do great things. I stand on that, and I see the teachers and their parents and families dedicated to the work that they do, and I am so proud. One of the proud moms back there, but I'm very proud and thankful that you chose me to be their principal and Ms. Van Dronin, because she's awesome, too. Thank you.
I'd just like to say thank you to Dr. Roby and the board and the foundation for your support of the arts, and not always, every school district does that, and it seems like every month we're up here celebrating music or art, and you know, when you look at that art, it just always either puts a smile on my face or makes me think or feel another emotion. So that's a testament to our principals' leaderships and our art teachers like Ms. Van Dronin, who bring out the best in our scholars, and the leadership of Mr. Van Til. So thank you.
All right. I'd like to recognize these students formally. Ms. Van Dronin has an incredible certificate from the Michigan Art Education Association that she'll present to these students, so with the board's permission, once the scholars are standing and recognized, it'd be great if you'd be willing to have a picture taken with these scholars. We'd appreciate that. So scholars, please stand and be recognized. All right. You can do that, too.
We can do a fist bump. Congratulations. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Wait.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
All right. Thank you, guys. If we could stand up front, we're going to take your picture. All right, guys, just squish it in. All right. Okay, on three. One. Two, and three. Awesome. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
It is always, as an educator, as a former teacher, we love to see the products that our young people are producing when they're using their minds well. And so thank you for sharing your craft, and to your parents, thank you, as well as to our team at Coit, thank you so much. Our next celebration will be welcoming of our new scholar representative, Mr. Terrell Daniels, and Mr. Mel Atkins will come forward to give a little bit of information about our new scholar rep.
Good evening, Dr. Roby. I'm President Williams, and members of the board, and Mel Atkins, Second Director of Community and Student Affairs. And I have the pleasure of welcoming our next wonderful, fantastic scholar representative to the Board of Education. Terrell Daniels is the president of Union High Schools National Honor Society. He sits on Union High Schools Leadership Team, the Superintendent Scholar Advisory Council, Mayor's Youth Council, and Union's JROTC Program, where he's a member of the drill team. The drill team took second place in the state of Michigan's Drill Team Championship this year. Besides these things, Terrell is also the GRPS representative on the Kent ISD Leadership Team, and he sits on the State Superintendent's Advisory Council as well. He is also a challenge scholar, and he plans on attending Michigan State University, Go Green, to study astrophysics through the Natural Science College. Please join me in welcoming Terrell Daniels to the Grand Rapids Public Schools Board of the City of Grand Rapids. That's impressive. Extremely impressive.
Well, thank you so much for joining us, and because we would go right to our report of scholar representatives, so I guess I'll start with you, Mr. Daniel. Is there anything else you would like to tell us about yourself, and then anything you would like to share with the board tonight?
I would like to share that, I would like to shout out my school, actually, Union High School. Today, this year's been very successful. You know, we've, we've had like countless groups for our students. We've had grief groups for people who are grieving. We have groups who are supporting soon to become, soon to becoming parents, and our staff is just very lovely, and I just want to shout them out. You know, I also want to shout you guys out. I think you guys deserve recognition, you know, you guys do a lot for us, and I would just like to take time to appreciate you guys.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you for joining us. Mr. Calderon.
Well, I'm excited to invite my new superintendent representative, but I will talk about what we spoke on in our last meeting, which was, we all in the Superintendent's Council had devised some ideas for an anti-vape commercial. We are trying to create a sort of advertisement to stop our students and any person who is underage from ever even coming close to a vape, since there is a lot of issues of vendors or an epidemic of people in our youth indulging and getting addicted to nicotine and vaping. We are trying to stop that by creating commercials. I know me and myself, me and myself and Daniels had created some great ideas, which I would love to see be implemented, and I hope that GRPS hears our ideas and uses them so that we can speak to the youth and stop this epidemic.
Wonderful. Great work. Thank you. We are at our first opportunity for public comment, and...
I put a card in. I know I got to.
Thank you. We'll have Ms. Shaki read us in while I try to retrieve those last cards. Thank you.
All right. Good evening again, everyone. If there are individuals present who wish to address the board, please fill out a public comment card located at either entrance of the board chambers. Please also read the rules on the back of the comment card concerning policy and procedure. We have two public comment sections on the agenda. The first one right now is public comment on board agenda items. Agendas are located by the comment cards. The second public comment opportunity is for commenting on non-agenda items related to the business of the district but are not topics on the current agenda. If you wish to comment during both public comment opportunities, you will need to fill out separate cards. Individuals must completely fill out the front of the card and indicate the specific business on which they wish to comment. Please submit the completed card in the bin on the table at either entryway of the board chambers, and our board assistant will collect the cards submitted. We ask that speakers please refrain from making abusive statements about board members, employees, volunteers, or contractors, and speakers are encouraged to present complaints about a specific board member, employee, volunteer, contractor, through the appropriate process established under Board Policy 9450 before requesting the board's consideration. The board policies can be found online at GRPS.org. Individuals will be invited one at a time to the podium to address the board. Before beginning your comment, please state your full name. At that time, we will start the timer, allowing each individual three minutes to make their comment. A one-minute notice will be flagged by providing this red card. You will need to complete your comment time upon being notified that three minutes has passed. Board members do not respond directly to public comment, but concerns will be brought to the attention of appropriate staff. We value your input, and thank you for sharing with us.
First, we'll call down Dan Slater, and then Jane Neiman, you're on deck.
Dr. Roby. All of you know me, pretty much, and when I'm here in this capacity, I'm speaking as the Chair of the Grand Rapids Educators Coordinating Council, and that is the entity that all of our local unions make up here in Grand Rapids. So GREA and all of our ESP groups report to me. The fact that tonight, in our purchasing agenda, we are talking about staffing services via Sunbelt and maximum healthcare staffing to outsource and privatize jobs in Grand Rapids Public Schools, no. That's not going to happen, because, first of all, there needs to be a letter of agreement between Grand Rapids Public Schools and the union, and there is not one. I know this for a fact, because I would have seen it. The fact that we are doing this highlights a couple things. We are not paying our employees properly or well. We are not going out and attracting the talent that we need to do. We need to offer a competitive wage and benefit package, and the fact that these childcare worker jobs are with the students, with IEPs, are most delicate students, and we're outsourcing these jobs, privatizing, that just, that's not right.
Jane Neiman.
Good evening. My name is Jane Neiman. Speaking right now is the Vice President of the Grand Rapids Educational Association. Good evening, President, Superintendent Roby, and board members. Terrell, congratulations. I'm the Director of the NHS Union, so Terrell and I know each other well. So congratulations, Terrell. I'm glad that you're going to be a representative on the board for us and for the district. That's awesome news. I would like to, first of all, say that I have had meetings with Eric Harmson and Steve Petros around evaluation data, and today I was previously over at Sigsby before our coffee meeting today at the library, talking about the social-emotional curriculum for high school, which is being chosen and evaluated and looked at. And I want to say that my conversation this afternoon was very, I think, positive. I had a great conversation with Jackie Westover and Matt Candel, I hope I pronounced his name right, and that was awesome. I was a little disappointed that, I feel like there is a little bit of a lack of engagement. I know that our staff are very much overworked and busy, and especially now with seniors finishing up and getting ready for senior grades, honors nights, and so forth. I have induction ceremony for NHS. I know that a lot of us are busy, but I feel like that outreach needs to be a little bit more comprehensive. Also, I asked a difficult question about whether students' feedback has been or exploration has been included in some of these ESL curriculums that have been adopted, and I'm hoping that we can get more student feedback on how those are working. I know that they have been, been implemented in K-8 and middle school, and we talked a lot about that this afternoon. So that was a very productive conversation. I want to thank the board for contributing some pre-tax ester funds to the staff here at GRPS. I think that was a very welcome announcement. I think that that made spring break just a little bit brighter, and so I want to thank you for funding that, those funds for staff. My concern is, as we're looking at the purchasing agenda and what we spend money on, and I looked at how much we spend on edgy staff, which I'll talk about later, and Calvert-K12, we need to find better solutions, and I really want to encourage Dr. Roby to share with us who our bargaining team is going to be this year, and also if we can find some dates sooner rather than later, so that we can try to problem solve this a little more ahead of our next fiscal year and our next school year. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have our secretaries' report.
All right, just two items this evening. First, the Academic Achievement Committee will be meeting on Tuesday, April 16, at 4:30 PM in the board chambers here in the administration building, and the Finance Committee will be meeting on Tuesday, April 23 at 4:30 PM, also here in the board chambers in the administration building.
And then committee chair updates. Ms. Shaki, for the Finance Committee.
Okay. The Finance Committee met on March 26, and we started with a update on the governor's budget proposal for this next fiscal year, and I would say the, the thing that we pay the most attention to, of course, is what the foundation allowance will be. Something you've likely heard the board and the Finance Committee talk about is receiving less money from the state as in regards to per pupil. And what I want to clarify on that is, in comparison to the last few years, so what we mean by that is, right now, the governor is proposing a per pupil increase of $241 per student, that's a 2.5% increase over this year. If you were to look back at the last three years, the minimum increase over the last three years has been $450. In 2020, 2021, there was no, absolutely no movement on the per pupil cost. The year before that, the 1920 school year, we had an increase of $240 per pupil. The year before that, no increase. So what we're looking at, and what we've been anticipating, especially from those experts in the business office, is that we would return to what we would consider pre-pandemic funding of the schools. So that is indicated in this, this budget proposal from the governor. What we know, of course, is that this is the last budget. The House and the Senate now go to work, and we'll have their proposals that'll come out in the next few weeks, and then negotiations occur and get us to the finish line with the budget, ideally by the time our budget is due, which is the end of June, but certainly by the end of September, which is when the state's budget is due. So that's what we're looking at as we look to the next academic year and our own budget planning.
Thank you. Ad-hoc facilities, Ms. Shaki.
Okay, back to me again. All right. It won't be on me tonight, I promise. All right. The ad hoc facilities committee met on April 9. We opened discussing draft policies for the closing and securing of our educational buildings. So the district and Chief Johnson put together a draft of policies for us to consider as we look at taking offline our educational buildings throughout this bond time, this reimagined GRPS time. So this is a long process, but I appreciate that the district came to the table with something that we could dissect and discern, and we will be bringing that back to the committee in May, after that likely to a work session for the full board, so that we can put into, into policy the intent of the board and the district when we close an educational building, and the policies by which we will determine what's next for that building for our community in Grand Rapids. So stay tuned for more on that. We also had a really robust update on all of the bond projects coming up. I'll touch on just a few highlights. Good news on Coit Sibley and parking lots that are going to be completed this summer. All of those bids came in within budget, so that is wonderful news. Under design right now, we have the Innovation Central Auditorium. Sigsby is the next school that will go under design. What I appreciate about the district is they were intentional to inform us that there will be many community engagement events during the design process to ensure that we are hearing what our scholars and families and staff need in those buildings as we work to design them, to update them to their needs. We'll also be issuing requests for qualifications for a host of projects coming up. Those include parking lots at Innovation Central, Lyon Street, Grand Rapids Montessori, Kent Hills, Congress, and CA Frost. Those are in the summer of '25, not this next summer. Housman Field updates, the Union Pool. So there's been a change to the timing of when we'll do the update work at the Union Pool and the Ottawa Pool, and we just, we flipped them, and the rationale for that is to give our Ottawa swimmers a full season in their new pool. We have disrupted those athletes enough, and so I appreciate the district's attention to that. So looking at Union Pool first, and then leading into the programming work at Riverside and Kenosha, and the district team is working with those academic teams to inform the redesign of those buildings. So lots of exciting things happening around the bond project. Lastly, just a note that our team and the City of Grand Rapids Facilities Task Force are meeting and talking about potential reuse, re-adaptation of our buildings, and we anticipate a joint presentation to the ad hoc facilities committee from the city and the district in May. Thank you.
Next, we have our Legislative Committee. Mr. Rodriguez.
Thank you. So we had our first Legislative Committee meeting of the year, March 25. We're, you know, starting on a roll. We heard from Stephanie, our lobbyist with McElve Merchant and Associates. So something that I just want to touch on briefly is, we did have a legislative breakfast back in mid-March, and from there, we discussed having more touch points throughout the year with some of our state legislators, and so we're looking forward to how this will unfold. We believe that, you know, to help to meet the needs of our scholars, as lawmakers have a more intimate understanding of how we operate as a district, that'll only serve to benefit us as a whole. We had a very robust discussion on March 25 about a lot of things moving through the legislature, so I won't bore you with everything. You can check it out on YouTube. It is on our GRPS YouTube channel, so check that out if you want to hear the entire riveting conversation. But some highlights, trustee Shaki already mentioned kind of some, some key points of the governor's proposed educational budget. We are working towards securing a $10 million grant for helping our district's consolidation efforts. There's more to come on that, so we are in the middle of trying to get that secured. And then key teacher evaluation reform legislation has been signed into law. That's something that's going to come in the '24, '25 school year. Changes include a move to 20% of the evaluation being based on student performance and assessment data, and also changing some key terms in the evaluation system, such as, you know, highly effective, effective, minimally effective, changing to effective, developing, and needing support. We also discussed changes in that, in that evaluation reform that prohibit evaluation results being used to grant tenure to teachers, or whether to remove ineffective tenure teachers or administrators, and we did ask more, for more clarification from Stephanie on that. That's something that, again, you can see on the, on the YouTube channel. And then lastly, one of the biggest items moving through the state legislature is the dyslexia bill package, and so this, again, is not law yet, but what it proposes is, it would require school districts to screen at least three times a year for K-2, K through third grade students for dyslexia. It also would require teacher prep programs to teach about dyslexia. Obviously, literacy is a huge issue, and we want to make sure that if we do have students with dyslexia, that, that teachers know what that looks like, how it presents itself in students, and that they have the support necessary to, to, you know, overcome that barrier in education and their education. And so those are some of the key updates we had. Again, check out the entire one hour and 16 minute meeting on our YouTube channel, GRPS My Choice, and that's all I've got.
Mr. Rodriguez, did they talk about including some funds to handle all of that additional training and testing and those things? Because there seem to be...
You know what?
Like, we have a conversation about legislation, but not the money that we need to support it.
Right. That is something that we also asked, because we did talk about some, some extra funds kind of coming into a general pot. It was, I think it was like $30 million earmarked, and I said, is that part of the legis, or part of the money that's going into this, you know, dyslexia package? And Stephanie said she'll get back to us on that, but she said, she said that possibly might be, but I'm like, okay, we need some more money if we're gonna, if we're gonna implement all of these things. So talk to your legislators. Tell them to fund us more equitably, because we want to do this. Our teachers want to do this. We need that money. We need those funds.
With regard to that, Mr. Rodriguez, and for the audience as well, that's one of the platforms that we are advocating as superintendents around either unfunded or underfunded mandates, and one of the things that educators do fully understand, we want to do the, the right work and make sure that we have processes for assessing our, our young people, and then also the supports of doing that, but often it is either not funded or not funded at the level that it needs to fully implement it, and that includes training of, of staff, and then the additional resources, because often students who have exceptionalities, where they either have a IEP or 504, or some other kind of designation that requires additional services, that also requires additional staffing around that and making sure that we have the supports around that. And so that's one of the, the things that we have been pushing our electeds to also consider. because I think they're well-intentioned in a lot of ways, but not always fully understanding the impact. And it's not really a one-size-fits-all. We want to make sure that we are sensitive to what individual districts need and are malleable to what those are. And so that's one of the things that superintendents have been having conversations with MDE as well as our locally, our local electeds around some of those kind of initiatives.
And sorry, clarification, I was looking through my notes. So early literacy is being allocated an extra $300 million over two years for high-quality instruction. And again, that is kind of, you know, we're hoping that more funding comes for this, you know, for this bill of testing for dyslexia. But again, that's kind of where the state is saying that that money should come from. But again, as Dr. Roby just said, you know, we would like to have additional funding to really implement this type of mandate to fidelity. So that's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you. And then next, we have our conference report out. So Dr. Roby, would you like to go first as someone who attended the conference and then I'll bring up the...
Yes, and so I had the opportunity over spring break to attend the National School Board Association Conference. And what's interesting about this particular conference is that you have school board members and superintendents from across the nation and hearing professional learning experiences and the stories that are taking place across our nation and where there's some similarities here for Grand Rapids and even for the state of Michigan. And so just some general things around the importance of communication and storytelling. And this even goes to a conversation that we were having earlier this evening with the Coffee with the Board, which is an initial kind of event that we did earlier this evening, but the importance of being active in our communication and our storytelling. And in that, it's not just the good stories, but just kind of what's taking place in and around our community and making sure the community is well-informed, but certainly making sure that the community can be very proud of the work that's taking place in, across the community. Other things are the beyond polarizing politics. And one of the things that I heard in various sessions is that our, what school boards are experiencing today is very different than what school boards may have experienced 10 years ago or earlier. And oftentimes, the role of the school board has become much more politicized in the last couple of years than what previously would have, you know, would have taken place and even the structures of how school boards come to be. Navigating sensitive issues and political landmines. And that includes everything from gender, identity, social norms, as we are about to hit our presidential elections and those things that are taking place, as well as poverty within school communities, the work and impact of AI. In particular, how do school districts navigate artificial intelligence? Because it's not necessarily going away, but how do we make sure that we have policies that support that work and we provide resources for staff as well as our students and community so that we stay ahead of those kind of landmines and potential landmines? And then always, culture and community building. What are best practices that we are seeing across the nation where culture and community is, culture and community is a focal point? And so those are some of the different things that I gathered over the conference.
What was the theme of this conference? Because usually they all have a, what was the, this was...
I don't remember. Okay.
This legislation, what's this?
That's a good question. I'm a, while she is...
So actually, I'm digging in the app and actually throughout the time, I don't remember there being a particular theme, but what I do know specifically...
Legislation, I just looked it up.
This conference...
Ruby Bridges, that was the other thing. We had a fireside chat. If those of you who are, because it was in Louisiana, and a conversation with Ruby Bridges, who was a six-year-old girl who integrated schools. And to hear her tell her personal story and how even her parents, and I apologize.
That's okay.
Her parents had very different views of should their six-year-old, and as I was thinking about this, it's like, this is a six-year-old who is changing the structure of how we do schools. And mother was extremely supportive of it and father, because of some of the things that he had experienced as a Korean War vet and some of the things of, of just the times that he was fearful for his baby. And talking about she, you know, what she experienced and then the power. And this is something that I need all of us to kind of just relish in, even though all of these social things and the National Guard and different things that were going on around this six-year-old. She talked about how her first-grade teacher made her feel safe and loved and seen. And as I was sitting there listening to that, I'm like, you know, all the craziness that goes around in the world, the importance of when an adult makes you feel safe and loved and seen is hugely important. And so that's one of the other things that resonated with me when she was doing her fireside chat.
Yes. I understand your excitement to share that because that was a big, a big moment for the conference, to be able to see that in a, you know, it was, the conversation was, you're alive. Like, this is not something that happened so far long ago that people are dead and gone. Like, she's alive, a very vibrant woman who is still fighting the fight. And so it's not ancient history. It's recent history. It's modern history that we need to make sure that we acknowledge, absorb, and not repeat mistakes as we go into this next phase of being not only inclusive, but also making sure that we apply the equity when we do this work. But one of the things the conference did for me, it really affirmed the work that this board has been doing with the help of Dr. Campbell. Everything from making a vision statement to a calendar of reports, those are things that were talked about at this conference. I attended a workshop called Understanding the Key Work of School Boards. They talked about the daily pressures on governance leaders and how enormous that is. This presenter stated that the more effective the board is, the better the school district's student performances are. And so it is important that we have healthy, effective school boards if we want to make sure that our students are performing at high level. She shared framework that reflects best practices for governance policies that are traceable to high-performing school boards and high-performing school districts. She listed several factors that align, several factors, but alignment being a practice that was highlighted, the alignment between the governance team, which includes the superintendent. Also important is that school board's members know their role and function. The board addresses policy to align with the who, what, and the why, and the superintendent and her staff uses procedures to determine the how. As we are doing our own policy work, I thought that there was some things that we could look at that came up. And I think we have looked at them, but maybe not as directly as this. So they stated that board policy is always doing one of the following related to existing disparities or barriers students experience in educational systems. It's either exacerbating, perpetuating, mitigating, or eliminating. And so as we've been doing our board work, I know we've been talking about it, but we haven't asked a question that directly about each policy. So I did share this information with your policy committee chair so that as we are doing policy work, we can maybe be very intentional to ask these questions specifically, exacerbating, perpetuating, mitigating, or eliminating. The presenter also mentioned some policy pitfalls, such as making reactive policy, failing to consult counsel, and blurring the lines between policies and procedures. She mentioned that there are four realities of board governance. One is when you become a board member, you're one person as an individual, but now you serve on, as a member of a team. So that's different from when you ran versus when you come on the board. Now you're not an individual, but a member of a team. Also, that you do not have the authority as an individual to take action. Three, your effectiveness as a board member is absolutely tied to the success of the board, and the success of the superintendent is absolutely tied to the success of the board. So it is important that our governance team works together as well as we work in a matter of trust. We have to build trust as we are doing this work if we want our best outcomes. Additionally, there was important communication about just making sure that we are communicating effectively as boards, that we're keeping things confidential that are supposed to be confidential, and that communication missteps are often things that actually will tear at a board so that if we are making sure that we are communicating well and that we are communicating effectively. Another workshop was regarding board self-evaluations. You guys know I've been a big proponent of this, and we are doing the work of this and we're getting to that. But some of the things that they talked about, and a lot of lists, so forgive me, but I thought the stuff was really great. So the presenter highlighted nine habits of ineffective boards regarding, one, disregarding the agenda process and chain of command; two, confusing the board role with the superintendent role, you see there's a theme with that; nitpicking; four, micromanaging the superintendent; five, playing up to the media; six, focusing on personal issues; seven, having interpersonal conflict with board colleagues and failing to communicate with them regularly; eight, not making time for board work or attending meetings; and nine, not respecting the leadership of the district. So these were some of the things that they talked about with regards to how kind of boards can kind of fall off track. And I saw us in our storming and norming phases and how we've grown in some of these areas. And so I do want to acknowledge that I'm not just saying that to pick, but I know that this work is something that is never-ending. It's always something that we have to be reflective of. We have, we may make progress and then we may have setbacks and we have to start over. So I just want to acknowledge we are growing, and even as we grow, we still have to be evaluating ourselves. We are, again, doing some work on putting together our evaluation process, and we'll have that for the board to kind of work out in an upcoming work session. Then there, of course, was, I won't go over, the polarizing product of leadership beyond politics. So that was a really big deal. There is a climate around school boards that is kind of really making them very political and not making sure that the work that we do is child-focused. And that when we are not doing this work focused on our students and our children, then we are doing a disservice, and this may not be the work for those people as they are maybe considering looking at this or as we are doing this work. I am reminding all of our colleagues, we are here for our young people first, and that has to be at the forefront of the work that we do. And again, this came up because this is stuff that is happening nationwide, not just in Grand Rapids or just in Kent County or just in Michigan. And then the last workshop that I want to share with you about, this was a workshop about public-private partnerships. And in this, there were a lot of districts discussing their need to right-size their districts and what they're doing with empty school buildings and things of that nature. And a lot are experiencing outside pressure to tell them what to do with these buildings. And they are learning that these pressures are not necessarily altruistic and that they are not necessarily having the district's interest at the forefront. And so they encouraged other districts that are in the same situation to hire someone who can work on their behalf specifically with the district's interest in mind. So as we are doing some of that work, I thought I would share that information with my colleagues. That was a lot, a lot of lists. I have another one, but I won't share that because this is getting a little long. But if anybody wants to talk to me about anything that they've heard or discuss the conference a bit more, it was a lot. It was, it was a lot this time. And I think it just is kind of where we are in our country and kind of preparing us for this next upcoming election. So it was some heavy topics. So I was exhausted. I literally was exhausted by the end of this conference. But good time and always appreciate being able to represent our district for some professional development. So that is the end of my report out. And then we have next on our agenda, the GRPS Foundation update. Dr. Roby?
So I'd like to invite our president and CEO, Ms. Stephanie Andrews, and then also Ms. Chaney, our executive director. Good afternoon, or evening.
Good evening, Dr. Roby, President Williams, board. Get out my notes really quick. Interesting, I was at a conference last week too, so in Florida, and it was the National Education Foundation Conference. I did learn, if you've met one foundation for education, you've met one foundation for education. We are all so different. But I did also want to bring back some learning things to share with you guys as well. This one was actually on collective impact. That was the theme. And it was really talking about kind of where schools are at and modeling for framing up different schools to either right-size or kind of look at things differently. One of the couple of things I thought, I found really interesting is that Nevada was presenting and Nevada apparently, and Michigan was up there too, but it's the number-one national shortage in the country, and they're working on a collaborative to really push state legislators in Nevada on a state of emergency for education and that they're hoping that it's going to go even higher to be able to then help other school districts. Michigan was flagged as also a state of emergency state as well. But it's really interesting on what they're doing for their teacher preparation programming and really trying to focus on the whole, the grow-your-own. They said that there's not a lot of statistics out there, that only Texas has been gathering data that homegrown teachers are 17% less likely to ever really leave the district comparatively to outside. But the only one that's really done any studies is the state of Texas. So the other piece is just really how do foundations work locally with other nonprofit groups and really help with collective impact? And how can we maybe look at other ways to support with what we know is kind of like those hidden different opportunities for students and lift each other up? So something to kind of look at, but lots of learning too. I don't know how many of you have gotten your MindShare invitation, but that is what we're working on diligently right now. We've raised over $120,000 already, and my goal is get $250,000 for this year. It's going to be at Hausman Field and really looking at kind of this whole, you know, just the old-school vibe of how many beautiful events have happened there, just that piece of history. So we're doing the kind of a throwback vintage gala, but instead of having people dress up, we really want you to wear your high school gear, you know, letterman jackets, sweaters, whatever that means for you, and some really cool sneakers. So we hope that you'll join us there. Dr. Roby has a couple of tables that we've given her to be able to fill as well. So we've been pretty busy because we've had two new members join our team. So Denise Helen, I think many of you maybe have met her or at least heard from her. She's our new development coordinator. And Matt Hoffman joins us from Aquinas College, and he is our new development director. So he started two weeks ago. A couple of things I want to highlight for you guys is this year, we have given up to 23 schools have applied for Teresa Weatherall Neal Principals Fund. And we've funded everything this year from camps to hygiene closets to proms to other student needs and spent a wide variety. This year, it's been more than we've ever kind of seen in this. So I'm really excited that we've been able to do that. And that is, I'm looking at my number here, just to kind of give you a number. With the 23 awarded there, I think there was over $44,000 that we've been able to give out. And then new this year is our Teacher Innovation Fund, and I think I talked to you guys about that earlier. We've been piloting this, and we have over 40 applications that have sat in our queue, but 28 have been completed, and we will have given away $14,000 so far. And those have been everything from science curriculum to art curriculum to math. Some of them even just been additional things that they can do outside with putting plaques on trees. We've given teachers an opportunity to purchase handheld microscopes. So I think it's been a really huge hit. So I think it's been a really huge hit, and what I find is when we award one teacher at one school, all of a sudden we get a slew of them coming in, which is great. And we'll wrap up those at the beginning of May for our final awardees this year. And then our whole goal is to fundraise for that again and do it again next year, and hopefully every year we'll keep growing it, but I think it's been pretty successful.
Do you want to talk about the date and the time for MindShare?
Oh, MindShare, oh, sorry, did I go right by that? MindShare is May 30th, so, in the Hausmann Field, and that will begin at 6:00 PM.
Do you want to talk about the prom dress initiative?
Oh, yeah. We are in the middle of doing our prom dress initiatives. As you guys may know, we give away prom dresses. We are up to, let's see, there's nine high schools, and I think we're in five now. So we have, we've collected almost 400 dresses and have been taking them, and I really appreciate Ms. Chaney's help in getting us a truck to be able to move, and the team has been really great. So it's been even more collaborative this year. GRPS team members have helped us with moving them, it can be quite a bit. And we're still doing, we're setting up dress shops and that kind of thing, so.
Shoes and accessories.
Yeah, yeah, we do all the things. Yep, and some of the schools, I know we've been asked about doing male gear because it's such a wider gap, we're not fulfilling that right now, but what we're finding is that some of our KCTC team members at the schools have been collecting those, and so then they have those available too.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Questions?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And if we have our superintendent's report?
So I'm going to invite Mr. Rodney Lewis to come forward, and he is going to talk about our certified count for the spring count this year.
Good evening, President Williams, Dr. Roby, and distinguished members of the board. Dr. Roby has asked me to come present on the certified count for our spring enrollment and connect this strategic theme six, which creates a culture of trust, collaboration, and stewardship. And so, well, there's a lot of bullets here, and so I'm going to just kind of share out some of the key components. Count day was February 14th. The real key components of this process is for schools to manage the 10-day rule, which they have to, students have to be back in school within 10 days of count, which was March 1st. They also have a 30-day rule, which excuse students or scholars have to be back in school within 30 days if they were excused on count day. And then the last one was, is the 40-day rule, they have to be back by March 30th. That rule applies for students that are suspended, long-term suspended, and they have been excused through the district system. On March 27th, prior to us leaving out for spring break, we had a final general data collection that was uploaded to the secure website for SEPI. And then also, we had to deliver, hand-deliver the hard copies to the ISD, to the auditors to support the count day process. So the auditors at that point will be reviewing all of our data that we submitted, and they will be making some adjustments or modifications to the certified account numbers that we submitted. So I know everybody wants to know what that number is, and so that number's 13,770.04 scholars, and that will represent 10% of our funding for our count for this school year. Are there any questions?
This was 0.4.
That's what I was going to say. How do we get you 0.4?
Well, it...
0.04.
So every scholar typically is a 1.0 FTE, which is a full-time equivalency. And so students like, if I was a student at, let's say, Ottawa Hills, and I was, I was out of school and I didn't return back for one of my courses, I came back for five of them, but I didn't come back for six, that's like a deduction of a .16. And so that's how those numbers kind of work out, and it's across the system, not just for one student.
Can you remind us what the fall count?
I'm sorry.
Can you remind us of the fall count?
I don't have that number with me. We are above the fall count though, I know that for certain. That's the number I can get back with you.
I'll make sure, if you send it to me, I'll share it on Friday.
Yep. I know it's a little less than 13,770.
Any other questions, colleagues?
Wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you.
The last report that I have, it was Ms., Dr. Love-Lady Mitchell, and she unfortunately went homesick this afternoon, so we'll push that out.
So we'll get an update for that at a later time. The first thing we have for our action items is our purchasing agenda. Are there any questions with regards to the purchasing agenda?
I did have a few comments on the purchasing agenda. So I did email the board some comments, just stating that to the public. But a few things. One is the purchase of 16 open gate units of Revolutionary New Weapons Detection System. So while I understand the need for, you know, these detection systems in our school, I don't necessarily believe that that is the most proactive use of our funds, especially with this Section 97 grant that can be used for educational purposes of educating community, students, and families about safe gun storage, about gun safety in general. So I will not be supporting that today. I would like to request that we remove this item. I would like to make a motion to remove this item because I do want to support everything else on the purchasing agenda. So I don't know if, can I make that motion currently, before, I guess, before discussion?
I'd just, I'd like to find out if there's any other discussion from any colleagues with regards to the purchasing agenda.
Yes, I have one for number six, I need clarity for that. I am confused on what it appears to, what it appears as if we are paying for services for the next school year, which would be the next FY year. So I'm, how this is written, we're paying for this remainder year and then into the next school year, and I'm trying to understand if I'm reading this wrong, or is that accurate how this is presented?
Was that something that was sent to our finance committee chair for clarification before the meeting? Did you send that to Ms. Shaki to ask?
I did not.
Okay.
All right.
What I remember from the committee meeting is this agenda item, so was previously approved, and I'm kind of looking at our CFO to see if I get this right. And this is simply a change of name for the organization, and so as a matter of policy, we had to reapprove it since it's a new, quote-unquote, "new vendor" with a new name. So it was previously approved? Yeah? Yes? Head nut?
Is it an extension?
Ah.
Ms. Krebs, can you come forward?
Thank you.
So to that point, that's where the disconnect is for me. I understand about the merger and the name, but I don't understand why this would be merged as a now and then versus us concentrating on finishing out for this academic year and then having this be addressed in next year's FY.
It's my understanding, as we're working with that contract they were looking for, to have, you know, since we're so close to the end of the year at this point, to just make it be like a 14-month agreement rather than to do a two-month, and then we have to renegotiate for another one at the same time as we're doing this one, so.
Any other questions, colleagues, with regards to the purchasing agenda?
Well, I was going to say, I understand that point.
And wanting to not necessarily revisit, but I think, I mean, by the time we, oh, no, never mind, I was going to say by the time we redo this, it's still going to be the same board, so never mind. I forget what I said. I did have one more thing, sorry, about the, are we voting on, or can I discuss the purchasing addendum as well in this?
Next.
You're currently talking about the purchasing agenda.
Yes.
Okay. So in that case?
Nope, that's all the...
So I did have a question, Ms. Rodriguez, on the motion that you plan to make.
Yeah.
I'm curious, are you recommending that, or are you recommending for consideration that in addition to the purchase of these 16 units, that we also include something regarding education, or are you thinking instead of?
So, well, so I feel like, I mean, in my statements that I made in an email, I did mention that I've asked about, kind of in relation to our resolution last year on safe gun storage, just wanting to have something that I believe is proactive rather than reactive because while I understand for some folks, it is seen as like a, you know, as a safety measure, right, to have these, you know, I'll call them metal detectors, right, for the sake of not having to go through the whole thing. But, you know, I see it as folks wanting safety and seeing this as a viable option for safety. However, I think that if we really do want to get ahead of this, and I know part of the discussion was, you know, we have other organizations that are willing to do this work, that are out there in the community already doing this work, and I appreciate that. But, you know, even last year, we had four, I mean, four guns that we caught, right? And some have, you know, there's probably many that were caught before they entered our buildings, and for that, I do appreciate our safety and security and Mr. Johnson for that. But at the same time, I feel like because this is such a prevalent issue for GRPS, we should be in the mix of educating our community and partnering with other organizations, and I'm not sure if I see that enough or at all. And if I don't see that, and it's happening, you know, that's my mistake, and I'll, you know, I'll take ownership of that. I'm just not seeing enough proactive work happening. And so, to your point, I don't mind supporting this, but I also want to see other work happening alongside it, and since I'm not seeing it currently, that's something I can support because I want both and. Does that make sense?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
So during our meeting, we did discuss what other initiatives were happening, and Mr. Johnson did speak on the and, this and what else was happening to teach gun safety and talk about, you know, educating our community, children, parents. So that was, that was brought up in the meeting, and we did discuss that, and that's why we did move it forward.
And I did have a conversation with Trustee Shaki, and I don't know if that came up enough for me to want to support this, if that's fair?
That's on me, as I had neglected to remember some of those details, so thank you, Ms. Wade, for reminding me that we did discuss that. So, yeah, that's on me.
Okay. So at what point do we get informed about the and?
Well, committee has been informed about the and, and so this is kind of where I have to kind of go back to what I was just saying. If our committee, we have to lean into the level of trust that our board members that are on that committee is doing the work, and they are asking those questions, and so if they are bringing it forward, it is a matter of us saying that we trust the work that you are doing on the committee. We do have access to attend committee, attend committee meetings, as well as you can reach out to committee chairs, even if that's not the committee you sit on, to express concern or issues about the committee. So I don't want us to, I don't want us to think because we're not on a committee that we don't have input with that work, but I do also don't want us to be in kind of, I don't know, I don't know if it's a matter of trust or what, but if our colleagues are there, like when you sit on the committee, we trusting you to ask the questions that we want asked and to bring forward the issues as we kind of know who we are and know what each other expects. And so we expect that throughout each committee. But at any point, feel free to reach out to the committee chair because we all get the agendas, and you are also always welcome to attend any committee meeting if you're not on that committee as a member of the public to give public comment as well.
I think what I'm going to say to you to that is about a healthy pushback on, it's not about trust, it's about asking and being informed. So if some of the questions are not presented until we're in this body as a collective and that sparks questions, that's okay. And I think that should be encouraged, and so asking what was the and to his question should not be out of order.
Right, and I'm not saying this out of order. What I am saying though is, oh, what I'm trying to impart is that when, some of these questions could be addressed before we get here, and we can get those answers, and then even with that though, it is a matter of extending the level of trust to our committee members as well. And then we always have the ability to say, we want to hear more about this, and can we get more details about that? So it's not a and/or, I mean, it's not an or, it's an and. We can do that, but I do want to just kind of encourage us to utilize what we do have available to us. We have the ability to see those meetings online. As Jose said, we have the ability to ask the questions when we get the agendas. We also have the ability to reach out to the chair and the board, and the board members that are on that to get any additional clarity that we might have if we are concerned about something that may have taken place in that committee meeting.
I agree with you, and I'm saying and, because you keep saying the and, and we have the ability to ask the questions here.
Yes, but here, again, you can ask those questions here, but at this point, the present, the information has already been presented. So I'm saying if we want the best outcome, sorry, for you to get the answers, if you ask the question here, that's already been presented to the committee member, those people are typically not prepared to come forward tonight because it's not on our agenda to bring it forward. So I want us to get the answers, and I'm saying, I'm trying to kind of allude to the best way to get the answers so that you feel comfortable when we get here to vote for it, or if you don't want to vote for it, don't vote for it. But there are ways for us to get some answers, and so I want to encourage everybody to utilize those means.
I did want to add to the, to the conversation we had about the open gate units, where also that we don't just use these units for day-to-day schools. We have lots of events where we have a lot of public coming into our buildings and to, and safety, we ain't had a chance to educate them. So we still want to make sure our facilities and the people that are in them are safe when we have basketball games, football games, all types of things. And one thing I do like about these personally is I didn't feel like I'm walking through a metal detector because you just walk through it. It's like you don't have the bags with you, you don't have to get your purse searched. So it is definitely more hands-off, and even if our students were to walk through it, it wasn't, it wouldn't feel like, you know, in some situations, so.
So, so is there any other questions with regards to the purchasing agenda?
Yeah, I have a question still on this open gate piece that I may not get an answer to now, and that's okay, but in light of the conversation, I am curious, Ms. Krebs and Mr. Johnson, if you know roughly what we have remaining in this Section 97 grant fund and when those funds have to be utilized? And I ask that question in context of Mr. Rodriguez's statement to wonder if there is room to do what he's suggesting along with obviously the purchase of these.
There are, I don't have an exact number, but there are still substantial funds that the state gave us late last fiscal year, so we're still trying to use last year's money. We do have a substantial grant that we are getting this year, I don't have that amount right now.
Okay, that's fine, thank you.
So, but there are funds available to do the and part as well. Some of those items, I just, don't cost as much, so they may not rise to the level of coming to a board purchasing agenda to be working on those as well. So I'm not sure what all of the details are, but...
And I believe it was like a, maybe like a $1.3 million grant?
Last year's was a 1.6, but we have, yeah, but we have spent down on it already, so that's where I'm not quite sure what's still left on last year's grant.
Any other questions or comments about the purchasing agenda? All right, and then I believe Mr. Rodriguez would like to make a motion.
Yes, I would like to make the motion to remove the... Yes, I would like to make the motion to remove the line item underneath General Fund, Section 2, Subsection B, purchase of 16 additional Open Gate units. Remove that from the purchasing agenda and move forward with the vote.
Is there support? All right, hearing none, we will go forward with the purchasing agenda. Is there a motion to approve the purchasing agenda as is?
A move.
Support?
Ms. Shaki, please call a row.
Ms. Lewis is excused, Ms. Melton is excused, Mr. Rodriguez?
No.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Ms. Shaki, yes. Ms. Wade?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Eetman?
No.
President Williams?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next, we have our purchasing agenda addendum. Are there any questions with regards to the purchasing agenda addendum?
Yes. This was part of the email that I sent in regard to this purchase. And, sorry, it's not coming up, but, so a few questions I did have was how many, in light of the outsourcing of staffing shortages that we have with social workers, now with childcare workers and parent pros, I just wonder where we're at with a comprehensive plan to fill all vacancies for next year. And of course, I didn't expect anything to be, you know, presented here within 24 hours of me asking. I just would like to express my, express the fact that I think we all share the same sentiments that, you know, virtual, you know, Elevate K-12, using staffing agencies to fill our vacancies is not a sustainable option for these roles. And so, I will not be supporting this purchase. However, I do understand that it is something that we need to do ultimately to fill these vacancies for the remainder of the year. I just hope that this is something that we continue to work and push towards, having all vacancies filled with GRPS staff. This is something I brought up at the coffee with the board as well. I want staff to, you know, be part of the GRPS community, be proud to work for GRPS, and have, you know, have sustainable options for our staffing issues. But I just can't support continuing staffing with staffing agencies.
All righty, colleagues, are there any other comments with regards to the purchasing agenda addendum? Righty, is there a motion to support the purchasing agenda addendum?
Motion.
Support? Is there any support? Support, Mr. Ross? Ms. Shaki, please call a row.
Ms. Lewis is excused, Ms. Melton is excused, Mr. Rodriguez?
No.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Ms. Shaki, yes. Ms. Wade?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Eetman?
Yes.
President Williams?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next, we have a consent agenda grouping. Is there a motion for the consent agenda grouping?
So moved.
Is there support?
Support.
Ms. Shaki, please call a row.
Ms. Lewis is excused, Ms. Melton is excused, Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Ms. Shaki, yes. Ms. Wade?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Eetman?
Yes.
President Williams?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, next we have our board president announcement. I will remind our board colleagues of the April 24th Board Retreat with Dr. Campbell as we continue to do this great work.
That date has been changed.
It's been changed, Julie, 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 changed.
May 22nd for Dr. Campbell?
Okay. We will look, so take April 24th off your calendars, I'm going to do the same, so that I don't, that's a busy week for me, so I appreciate that, getting that day back. So that will, we will be getting the dates for Dr. Campbell, please look for that. And then we will go to our next opportunity for public comment, which is for non-agenda items only. And Ms. Shaki, you can give an abbreviation.
Yep, I sure will. Yep, I'm starting halfway down, here we go. Individuals must completely fill out the front of the card and indicate the specific business on which they wish to comment. Please submit those completed cards in the bin on the table at either entryway of the board chambers, and our board assistant will collect those cards. We ask that speakers refrain from making abusive statements about board members, employees, volunteers, or contractors. And speakers are encouraged to present those complaints about a specific board member, employee, volunteer, or contractor through the appropriate process established under Board Policy 9450. Before requesting the board's consideration, the board policies can be found online at grps.org. Individuals will be invited one at a time to the podium to address the board. Before beginning your comment, please state your full name. At that time, we will start the timer, allowing each individual three minutes to make their comment. A one-minute notice will be provided by flagging a red card. You will need to complete your comment time upon being notified that three minutes has passed. Board members do not respond to public comment, but concerns will be brought to the attention of appropriate staff. We value your input, and we thank you for sharing with us.
Thank you. Anybody else that would like to make a comment, please make sure you turn that card in ASAP. This is the last opportunity, if you want to be a part of this public comment. First, we have Jolene Andrews, on deck we have Jane Neiman.
Good evening, my name is Jolene Andrews, and I teach at Southwest Elementary. I'm here tonight to yet again discuss financials and planning time. While staff members appreciate the $2,000 disbursement that will be paid out later this month, it is a Band-Aid. It does not make me feel better about my salary this coming year or any year after. It does not make, it does not help attract teachers from other districts or new teachers because it doesn't change our salary schedule. Yet again, next year I could go work in another district and make up to $15,806 more, which makes the $2,000 irrelevant. My salary at GRPS next year is set to stay the same. I have to imagine that the best way to attract teachers is word of mouth. I cannot encourage people to apply to GRPS, knowing that they would be paid less, that they would have less planning time, and that they're going to work in such a broken system. Another easy way to attract teachers would be by hiring our student teachers. Yet, student teachers in GRPS classrooms see how little planning time there is, discuss with their classmates who have placements in other districts, and decide to work in those other districts. The district is not doing the bare minimum needed to keep employees. Our art teacher resigned during spring break due to the effect that the lack of planning time and the working conditions were having on her health. She was not offered an exit interview, despite HR assuring the board that they would be doing exit interviews to find out why staff are leaving. Our PE teacher has been out on administrative leave for 17 months. He is a qualified teacher that we already have, but the district does not seem to be in a hurry to put him back in the classroom so our students can learn healthy habits. They are now without an art teacher and without a PE teacher, leaving only music. I understand GRPS is large and that it takes time for things to change, but it will take work to convince staff that you want things to change when the district cannot promptly respond to GREA on issues that need to be settled, such as planning time. We're not asking for more than what was promised to us during the last round of bargaining. Thank you.
Thank you. Jane Neiman, and next we'll have Richard Trapp.
Good evening again, I'm Jane Neiman, Vice President of GREA, also a teacher at Udine High School. I wanted to speak to the board tonight once again. We are grateful for the $2,000 bonus, but the bottom line is that this is not going to solve our problems. Thank you, Mr. Rodriguez, for speaking out about the outsourcing of jobs. Recently, I looked at some FOIA material, and I noticed that GRPS spent almost $5 million last year on edge of staff services, and this year is already, by the end of February, close to that amount, in addition to the $5 million approved for Elevate K-12. That is almost $10 million, probably will be more than $10 million by the end of this fiscal year, that we will be spending on just teaching staff alone and substitutes. We need to do something now to retain and recruit staff. In combination with our facilities plan to right-size the district, we need to perhaps accelerate that move so that we are saving more money on facilities expenditures and consolidating some of those positions into fewer buildings. So not only are we saving on expenses for buildings, for electricity, heat, and so forth, and perhaps reducing some of the administrative and other jobs so that we can right-size the district and afford to give our staff the raises that they deserve. But honestly, something needs to change between now and June, and I sincerely beg Dr. Robie to sit down with us before the end of the school year to see how we can at least moderately adjust the salary schedule so that the teachers who are here are going to get a raise next year instead of in two more years, because the current salary schedule is not competitive the way it stands. This would not necessarily mean a huge increase. We also have a salary proposal that we put to the district at the end of February, beginning of March, still have not heard a response to that. And honestly, with the vacancies coming out, with the retirement, with the teachers leaving, we can't afford to delay this. We need to sit at the table now and find viable solutions to these problems now. We can't afford to wait until the next budget, the next fiscal year. We need to have something in place. And I know that you have stated that we may be losing federal funds, but we can see from coming to these meetings and looking at the budget statements that GRPS does have money to spend. They've been saving money, and there is money to be had. And if you look at the percentage of the budget that's spent on instruction versus non-instruction, there is a huge gap between what we spend and what other districts spend. So I'm asking you to make sure that we are more fiscally responsible in how we use the funds we have, and that we invest in our staff and recruit new staff so that we can provide a world-class education for our students. Thank you.
Richard Trapp, and then we'll have Kara Shower.
Good evening, Board. Dr. Robie, my name is Richard Trapp. I'm a, I was at Ottawa Hills, I'm now at Union. And again, you know, the 2K, the 2,000 was very nice for all staff, and I actually really appreciated it wasn't just teachers, but a, you know, across the board. Because really, everybody deserves a little bit more. In my, I guess, almost six and a half years now in the district, I've noticed that it seems like, and I'm going to just use an analogy here, that we're just rushing around putting out fires versus doing some fire prevention. And right now, we have a lot of tinder on the ground, and if we can do some prevention and get that tinder, and that prevention is getting all of the contracts done, just not for GREA, but for everybody to make it, make it better, I think we're going to be much, much further ahead, and we're not going to see the staff losses that I can kind of see looming from people I'm talking to. And, you know, I wanted to be respectful for everybody, you know, respectful of our time, because I am on the bargaining committee, and I want dates ahead of time. You know, I want to be able to just lock things out of my schedule, and I know that I'm going to be giving up days during the school year, maybe some days during the summer, but we can't be negotiating this in late August. We need this done by June 1, June 15 at the latest, so that we can have people say, "Yeah, I'm going to stay," versus people saying, "Yeah, I'm going to go." And I don't want to see people go, because I love working in this district, you know, and I don't want to be one of the ones that goes either. I gotta be honest, I gotta, I mean, I'm close to retirement. I'm on those last three or four years. And if I can get a big raise somewhere, and I look at what that does for my retirement, it's very hard for me not to look at my wife and say, "No, honey, I'm going to stay, we're going to take less for the rest of our lives." You know, and so that's what we're looking at. I want to finish my career in GRPS. All right, thank you.
Thank you. And Ms. Shower?
Hello, I'm Kara Shower, back again, off the cuff. I'm not sorry. I want to say thank you for holding the coffee with the board this evening. I had shared that we have like a little Ridgemore Park Village Facebook page, which is not associated with GRPS in the sense that it's purely parent-run, and we, it's just a way for parents to be like, "Hey, my kid needs a ride home, hey, my whatever," you know, keep in touch with each other, when we might not necessarily have phone numbers. I had shared that there, and a whole slew of parents said, "Oh, the board is coming to our school to talk to us, this is amazing." And I was like, "Nope, sorry, that's not what this is." But the amount of enthusiasm that they expressed in having the opportunity to talk to you in a format that is not this was really wonderful. So just thank you for that. I want you to know that that's like meaningful to our little Ridgemore community. I came in late, so I missed the first half, but the last half that I caught was really wonderful to hear the discussion, especially from some folks that I haven't seen show up here to stand at the microphone before. That said, my school is hemorrhaging families. I, every single, literally every single day of school, hear from another family that they have applied elsewhere. East Grand Rapids, Forest Hills, Northview, Kentwood, Children's Discovery Center of Grand Rapids, homeschool co-ops, just homeschooling at home, even though I am utterly unqualified to homeschool. Family after family after family, because communication is not great, because we can't, and by not great, they mean terrible, because we cannot retain our staff for anything, and every good teacher keeps leaving. My son looked at me the other day and said, "Mom, why do all the good ones leave?" And I was like, "Great question, you want to come talk to the board?" And he was like, "Absolutely not." But our children are seeing it at this point. And so to echo what the others have said, teacher salaries really need to be at the forefront of the work that you're doing the rest of this year. I think I speak for teachers and parents, all in that vein. Similarly, to some of the communication frustrations that we have, the video recording tonight is not live, and I was curious if you all were aware of that, because that was a change that happened, and none of the parents in my cohort knew about it. Apparently, it's getting posted after, but just like little things like that, where like, it shouldn't be that hard to notify families in our district, like, "Hey, this is going to change, just so you know, you can't watch the board meeting live anymore, you can catch it later on." That's totally fine. But just, like, as an FYI, those are the kinds of things that, like, we see people failing at on the regular, that we're like, "Is this really so difficult that we can't just like hit a blurb, 'Hey, this is changing, now you know, moving on,'" instead of parents being confused, like, "Hey, where's the board meeting? What are we doing? I'm trying to stay in the loop, I can't stay in the loop in the ways that I thought I knew how." Just an encouragement to try to push continually for better communication. Thank you for starting that with this coffee thing, please carry on with that. That's all.
Thank you. We have superintendent's comments.
Good evening, everybody. Happy Monday in what feels like the beginning of spring in Michigan. I'm always excited when the weather is a little bit warmer and you can open your doors, get fresh air. Just a reminder of a couple of events that are taking place this spring. We have our citywide art show that begins April 24th and goes through May 9th. And what's so exciting about this, it's the art of not only GRPS scholars, but it's children across our city and other neighboring school districts and communities, and it's a really nice event to see just the brilliance and the creativity of young people, and that's downtown at WMU, their campus downtown, and I'm, I think, Ionia?
I think it's on Ionia.
It's on Ionia, so to invite people to do that. Also, as we are closing out the end of this school year, we will have our annual Kids Speak that takes place this coming Friday, and that's another opportunity to hear from our young people, and it's a topic that they select through the Mayor's Youth Council, and Dr. Lovelyy Mitchell will be one of the moderators this year, and I'm not sure which board member is attending in, not to put anybody on the spot, but there will be others. Oh, okay, two, okay. Mr. Rod, Mr. Rodriguez and Ms. Shaki will be there, and it's always just really, really nice to hear for our young, from our young people about what they think about what we as adults are doing or not doing, or that, things that we can do better. That, and then the last thing I just want to lift up is, earlier this evening, we did have coffee with the board, and the purpose of coffee with the board, and this came from this, this group's initiative around how do we engage and have conversations with the community, because this current structure, and it's a structure, it doesn't necessarily Because this current structure, and it's a structure, it doesn't necessarily lend itself to having conversations. And we piloted it this first time, and the goal is to debrief with the members who participated in it. And we will probably be reaching out to some of the community members who participated in it as well to say, what did you like? Do you have some suggestions about how to make this better for next time? And that's something that our board is very committed to about how do we engage authentically and have conversations? And it really was a good conversation. It wasn't, we didn't have an agenda, but we just talked about a couple of different things, and people brought up stuff that they wanted the board to be aware of or even to consider. And I think it's a nice opportunity. So I just want to commend our board colleagues who leaned in for this inaugural, not sure what this was going to turn out to be, to look like. And then also to community for coming and offering feedback and dialogue because I think that's important when we are able to kind of continually look for ways to engage with each other. So that concludes my comments for this evening.
Thank you. I will start with our newest student rep, Mr. Daniels. Is there anything you would like to add?
I would like to add that I can't talk about public comments, right? I agree with what teachers are saying. I've seen this, I've started seeing this actually last year, actually. And I've started talking to my teachers about it. And I, I don't know the math behind it, and I don't know the funding, but I do think that something does need to change about it. And because, I mean, nobody wants to work for less when they can make more, you know? And that's something real. And I've seen it. I'm sure we've all seen it. And I feel that's something that we definitely need to focus on more. Yeah.
Thank you. Ms. Wade?
No comment today.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Oh dang, I was hoping I'd be like, no. First, I want to say we have a local celebrity, Terrell. I am the attendance team lead at my school, and we have the Strive for Five posters for Kent ISD. Terrell is the most like prolific person on that poster. Have you seen it? Have you seen it? You have? Okay. It's amazing. It's such a nice picture. And also, I also got the chance to meet him at Kent ISD. I don't know if you remember taking a photo with me? Yeah. It was, it's nice seeing you again. Welcome to the board. But then secondly, you know, I truly do appreciate the work that this board does, that our district leaders do. And I don't ever want to come off as me, you know, not being grateful for the work because it's hard to run a district this size. It's hard to run any district, especially this size, right? But I just hope that I serve as someone who continues to push, you know, not just GRPS, but our community into imagining greater and doing better for our kids, for our families. Because I, you know, in my time in GRPS, I, I wish I had been longer, right? But now I'm on the school board and doing different things. But I just know that there's a lot of hard work going into this every single day. And, you know, I just don't want to come off in the wrong way. But again, I think that that's kind of one of my, one of my roles is to, is to continue to challenge and continue to challenge everyone here to do better for our students.
Mr. Ross?
No comment.
Ms. Shaki?
Echoing Mr. Rodriguez, I just want to say that although my votes were different from his tonight, I share the values that he stated. And there's tensions that we hold in these two spaces that we talked about tonight. Tension around how do we define what makes us feel safe? Or how do our scholars define what makes them feel safe? Knowing that for some families and students, the vote we made tonight is that definition. And knowing for others, it's the complete opposite. And so while I said yes, now that we had the discussion about what remains, I'll have the opportunity to hone in and focus on, you know, what comes to us next so that we share, we create, we hold that tension in this space and ensure that we're balanced in how we're supporting families and scholars in safety and staff, of course. The other tension, of course, being staffing and knowing that today in our districts, there's not enough and that we have to in real time decide how to make these decisions, oftentimes in ways that we don't want to. We don't want to outsource these positions. We know what has to come next. And, and again, tonight's vote was understanding that tomorrow we can provide some level of support, but that the tension there is in years to come, the, the plan has to be better, right? The, the pay has to be better, and we know that. So in lockstep with my colleague, although sometimes our votes are different. Okay, that's all I have. Thank you.
Mr. Eetman?
Yes. I wanted to welcome you to the thesis here. So excited to have you on board and to also hear your voice and the student population that you represent as well. Scholar voice, we talk about often here is important. And so to see this elevated and also to see how you're going to contribute with all of the accolades that everyone has shared about you. I'm super excited to see how you contribute, and so welcome once again. I also want to thank everyone who showed up for the coffee with the board. I think that is a crucially important in a different format for us to almost humanize what typically appears appear to be a very, at times, stern government body. But we have to make very intentional and last-longing decisions. And so to have a different format where you all can engage with us is crucially important in that regard because that is how we can hear a different pulse or the continuation of some of your issues that might get arise. But also to have that come to a place where not just as a place of speaking out of things that are not going right, but also walking alongside us as a thought partner with solutions that you might see to the problem. I think that's also important because none of us are standing up here as subject matter experts in anything, but collectively, we understand the impact of diversity of thought and voice and what that can bring about innovation to a district that is seeking that. And so I'm super appreciative of all of you who showed up today and those who will continue to show up in the future. That is equally as important. And then the work. We do work regardless of what you see up here. And I'm be, listen, I am a no-chaser type of individual. If you get to know me, those who know me know that. Regardless of what you see up here, it's important for you also to see how we push back with each other, also in how to model disagreements with even our youth. Oftentimes, we don't get to have platforms that show examples of how to effectively and to debate as adults where it's healthy and not toxic from what we see on social media. And to be able to have a platform where you all can share that discourse and still have a level of respect is needed, is needed. And also to show you that it's not all grits and gravy. I love grits and gravy, by the way, but it's not all grits and gravy when it comes to things. And that's really important for us as we continue to dialogue. It's the diversity of thought up here that we will have different perspectives and see things in a different way that also brings about innovation. So as you all continue to push back on us, we will push back on, on the ideas and the concepts because at the end of the day, all of our hearts, including yours, is for a better education system, a better district that we can be continuously proud of, even though we are proud of now. But that work that we have to posture and lean in to make this a world-class district is not just done by the work by us, but it's also in conjunction with you all. So continue to lean in, walk alongside of us, challenge us, sharpen us, and be okay with that discourse that might happen with us, but also with you as well. But understand that at the end of the day, we're doing this for the scholars.
Thank you. Ms. Davis?
No comment tonight.
Okay. Well, I'll start with thanking everyone for coming out. We appreciate you attending this meeting as well as the coffee and conversation. I want to congratulate our amazing students that our work was, I mean, just amazing. I, every time I see art, I'm always just like, oh, my gosh, I couldn't do that right now, let alone at their young age. So I'm just super inspired by their talent and what they are going to offer this community as they continue to blossom. I will share, I think I've talked with some of our community members and union members and let them know that we sometimes have a situation where we have dueling responsibilities, right? And so while we want to do everything that we can, on one regard, we have to deal with some things called budget, making sure that we don't put ourselves in a position like some of our other districts where we're laying off staff, where we are doing those things. We'd rather be, I know, you know, fiscally responsible don't always feel good. Having a tight budget does not always feel good, do you know? We'd love to splurge and make sure our teachers got everything that they needed. In the end, will that make us fiscally responsible? Will we be in a position where we can sustain that? That's important. So we want to, we are leaning in. We are challenging the district to do some additional work. And so it may not be going as fast as some would like, but that work is underway, and we appreciate your patience as we do that. Again, thank you, everyone, for coming out. Have a great night. This meeting is adjourned.